The town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
So, let's begin. Today is January 4th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Regular town council meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody and wish everybody a happy new year. Hopefully, it's healthy and prosperous for everyone. So, the first item on our agenda is a fire department chief swearing in. It's a presentation, and I believe Councilman Nazzo is going to lead us through that. So Jesse, would you like to take it away?
Good evening, Mountain Chair. Thank you very much.
Hi.
We have everyone here this evening, so I think we're ready to get started. Big Matthew.
I'd like to do the oath of the pledge first.
Sure.
And the oath first, and then the big hand. Raise your hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties as second assistant to Chief, to the Plainville Fire Department, to the best of your abilities to help the town.
I do.
Congratulations.
I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
What we're going to do is maybe the oath first, and then the big hand. Raise your hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties according to law as the first assistant to fire chief in the Plainville Fire Department, to the best of your abilities to help the town.
Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties as the best of your abilities as deputy chief of the Plainville Fire Department, to the best of your abilities to help the town.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're going to love this. Seriously.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties according to law as chief, in the Plainville Fire Department, to the best of your abilities to help the town.
There, Paul.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mountain Chair, I'd like to congratulate all the new chiefs of the Plainville Fire Department, as well as thank outgoing Chief Kevin Tonner for his years of service to Plainville. And at this point, I'd like to invite new chief Thomas Machini to say a few words.
I'd like to thank the council, Jesse, the town manager, for having the confidence in me to give me the job, protect the town of Plainville. I'd like to thank my family, who was a big part of this whole thing. They've been around for... My mother started this in 1960, and she's still going with it now. I'd like to thank my new chief. Thank you, gentlemen. It'd be a pleasure working with you. And I'd also like to thank Chief Tonner for his help. Chief Swanson has been a big part of my life at the firehouse. So, thank you, and he thanks everyone.
Are you all set, Jesse? On behalf of the town council, I would like to congratulate all of you being installed as chief officers of the Plainville Volunteer Fire Company. I know this is an enormous amount of time and energy that is dedicated to the town of Plainville. You're away from your families, and you put yourselves in harm's way. So, for that, I congratulate each and every one of you. And Chief Machini, congratulations and good luck going forward. Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to be moving on to the rest of our meeting, so would you like us to wait a few moments, Jesse, for everybody to take pictures or whatever else has to happen there?
I'm all set up to join the meeting in just a minute, so feel free to move forward. And I'm just going to mute us in here and turn this off again from here.
Okay. Jesse will be back with us in a few moments, but we can just get through a couple of other little housekeeping items before we get to our main portion of our meeting. This evening, we do not have a public hearing. We will pass over that. But I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please? Dave, unmute.
Yes, so move, Mountain Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rosemary. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not hearing, none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to announcements and reports, does anybody have any announcements or reports to share with us tonight? Okay. Appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments or reappointments to any of our boards and commissions that should be made this evening? All right, we're moving right along. That's a good thing. Board of Education would be at our next meeting, and so the report of our town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, are you here? Do you have anything for us tonight?
I am. Good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you. You too.
I have nothing to report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. So, item number eight, report of the town manager. Mr. Lee, would you please take over? We have a presentation this evening. If you'll give us a little bit of a preview for us, that would be appreciated.
Will do. This is regarding the White Oak Proposals Update. In April 2017, which is almost three years ago, believe it or not, the town of Plainville entered into an access and option agreement with the estate of Roger L. Tofflon for what is known as the White Oak Property located at 1 West Main Street and 63 West Main Street. The agreement gave the town the exclusive option to purchase the property for the sum of $1. The agreement was for the period through September 15, 2018, although that date has been extended several times and now runs to June 30, 2021. The desired purpose for entering into this agreement was, in quote, "for the purposes of downtown revitalization," end of quote. The agreement required the town to perform an environmental assessment and to obtain an environmental assessment grant from the State Department of Economic and Community Development. The town hired LaRero, a licensed environmental consulting firm, to perform the evaluation. On October 7, 2019, LaRero gave an update to the town council, which included three potential concepts for development of the property. The town council discussed the concept plans for the development of the property, and the consensus was one which, quote, "made use of more apartment space, commercial space, more parking areas, and recreational areas as well," end of quote. LaRero completed their evaluation in March 2020. They issued three reports. First report was conceptual remediation plan. The second one was Phase 2 and Phase 3 subsurface investigation report, and finally, the planning and potential reuse study report title. The town then applied for a groundwater reclassification for the property and acceptance into the abandoned Brownfields cleanup program. Both of these applications have been successfully completed. This past fall, the town issued a request for proposals for developers and received two responses. One was from Damato Meyer Group, and the other one was from Manafort and others. The town then engaged LaRero to perform a review and an evaluation of each of the proposals. Clint Brown, Sam Butcher, and Sarah Burkhalter Sweeney from LaRero are here this evening to present their report to the town council. Garrett Dagel is also attending to give a brief review of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Capital Region Council of Governments, and Cal Hawberger is here to give a brief summary of the recommendations of the Economic Development Agency and the Plainville Chamber of Commerce. Chairman Puzici would like to turn the presentation over to LaRero and ask Kevin if he could put the PowerPoint presentation up on the screen so that everyone could follow along.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Not sure who's going to start, Sam or Clint?
I am. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be with you this evening, and Happy New Year also. My name is Clint Brown with LaRero Engineers. I'm joined tonight by Sam Butcher and Sarah Burkhalter Sweeney. The three of us collaborated on putting together both the environmental aspects of the project that you just heard Mr. Lee talk about, and also, more recently, this proposal review and evaluation. So, without further ado, I'll get into it. Sam and I are going to hand the baton back and forth a little bit during the course of the presentation, and I know there's one point in time where we're also going to yield the floor to the town staff, so hopefully, we can pull that off without any incidences. So, go into the next slide, please. So, this is the content and scope of our work, our work tasks for the town. The first thing was to really review the proposals as they were submitted and evaluate whether or not they were complete in accordance with the requirements of the RFP. And then, from there, we're going to jump into some more of the detail of the programmatic components and how they set up against some of the important considerations that the town indicated they would like to understand in moving forward on this project if you chose to do so. Then we had some other categories of interest, and those are covered here in number three, which is the environmental impact on the Peckel Buck River. Well, I didn't say that right, did I, Sam? I'll get it eventually. I won't dwell on it, though. Next slide, please. Four other areas that we also looked into and evaluated were the cost of the remediation as it might be affected by the structure of the proposals and the characteristics of the site, the potential for benefits to downtown businesses, because that was the whole thrust for looking at this property in the very beginning, was how does it relate to downtown and how can it help the downtown? Next was to work cooperatively with the town to evaluate how these proposals might impact the town and sort of services that might be required, and so we'll get into that a little bit. And then finally, to offer and suggest a possible timeline for what's next and moving forward. So, with that overall introduction, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. This is a quick refresher of the Damato Meyer proposal, and of course, what you see on here is the site adjoined by the municipal complex, the fire department, the river, and West Main Street. Just a couple overview comments, the green areas, the ones surrounding the buildings, and then the open green areas were the area of the site that Meyer was proposing to use, and that included the two storage buildings and the open area behind and adjacent to the fire department. The balance of the site was to be used by Damato. They would reuse all of the other existing buildings that butt up against the railroad tracks. They would also construct a 35,000-square-foot industrial building. That's the striped rectangle at the rear of the property, and then they would use the balance of the property for equipment and material storage, which, as you can see, is a pretty good-sized area. So, that's a quick refresher on the overall context of that proposal. We can go to the next slide, please. This is the Manafort redevelopment proposal, and again, starting out on West Main Street in the bottom right-hand corner, that those existing buildings would be renovated for commercial and residential use. Going down the side, roughly parallel to the railroad tracks in the more or less purple color, is the industrial portion of the project for industrial condos with some parking. Coming back into the middle of the site is where the bulk of the residential development would be, three residential buildings, and then a combination, community building, residential building. And as you can see, in that area, that the site circulation is well-integrated, both within the site and out to the street. And as you move over towards the firehouse, you see the footprint of the medical office building, a provision for the Farmington Canal pathway down through the site, and then moving to the rear of the site, you see the open space and public amenity provisions of the plan. So, that, again, in a thumbnail sketch, is what the Manafort proposal consisted of. Next slide, please. So, our first mission was to look at the basic evaluation, a basic response to the proposals, and make sure that they were essentially complete. And as you know, you received one from Damato Meyer and one from the Manafort brothers and other parties. Both proposals were supplemented by presentations to council back in the fall, and then, as part of our work, we prepared a very thorough request for information to clarify and expand upon some of the topics that were proposed in the individual proposals. And then we also went through interviews with each of the proposers to further clarify things. So, taken all together, I can, I think, tell you with a high degree of confidence that both proposals are complete, and they're certainly worthy of your consideration. Next slide, please. So, the first area that we looked at was how the proposal laid up against the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. It's great that you updated your plan in 2019. It means that it's thinking, and recommendations are timely, sitting here in 2020 and 2021. And obviously, this site was given some special attention in that plan, particularly as it related to the opportunity for downtown development, its proximity to the municipal uses, and its potential because of its size and configuration for mixed use. As we said in our introduction, Damato proposes a continued commercial-industrial use, similar in some respects to what had been there with White Oak, but I think on a larger scale. Manafort was a very different proposal from that. It had mixed uses, very much emphasized public use and improvements with access to the river and provisions for accommodating the Farmington Canal Greenway Trail, among other things. So, it was our conclusion that the Manafort proposal conformed nicely with the POCD, and on that basis, appeared to be a more desirable plan. Next slide, please. Sam, I think that's you.
Thank you. As you are aware, we completed a remedial action plan, and our goal in that remedial action plan was to develop a range of cost estimates that conformed to the planning document that the town generated. And as you may recall, we presented to the town three alternatives with varying degrees of residential, commercial, and in some cases, industrial space. What the town selected at that time was a desire to incorporate all three elements of residential, commercial, and some open space. So, our remedial action plan was developed with that sort of vision in mind. Based on our evaluation, the Damato proposal requires the town to complete the remediation prior to the redevelopment process. So, the town would be the one actually doing the remediation, completing that work, and then turning the project over to the town, excuse me, over to Damato. The Manafort proposal, on the other hand, really is an integrated project where the town is working with Manafort to develop a coordinated remediation and redevelopment project that would bring the whole development plan to fruition. That coordinated effort would result, when the project is over, in the project that Manafort has put together. Both of the proposals, in our mind, anticipate the use of environmental land use restrictions, which are an element of the remediation regulations that allow you to isolate soil beneath engineered barriers, including buildings, paved surfaces, et cetera. But the Manafort proposal is consistent with the remedial action plan and the planning document, which are intended to minimize the costs. And in both of those situations, the difference is that the Manafort proposal considers the use of, or I should say, the reuse of soil that might be mildly contaminated beneath buildings, where those buildings, and these would be future buildings, have to be elevated to address floodplain issues. In that respect, we felt that the Manafort proposal was the more consistent proposal with the vision of the town. Next slide.
Thank you. I'll take that one. So, as we've mentioned tonight, we went through an exercise as part of the remedial action planning effort to identify some potential reuses of the property. Three of them were development scenarios, and one actually was status quo, leave it alone. And out of that came a desire expressed to look at mixed use and make that be the trigger to spur economic development activity in the downtown area. So, when you look at the proposals, you see Damato's proposal, which was, again, more or less a continuation of the past experience there, which doesn't necessarily fit very well into a downtown area, whereas a mixed-use development with its different facets, uses, and public space fits very nicely into that plan. So, again, it was our conclusion that the Manafort proposal was more closely aligned with the multi-use vision that all the various other planning documents had anticipated. Next slide, please. So, now we dove down into the numbers a little bit, and I want to preface presentation of these numbers with a couple of caveats. One, neither of the proposers gave us hard numbers. They gave us characteristics of their projects, which allowed us to prepare what I will call educated guesstimates of what various revenues might be. And they're not absolutes. There's obviously a number of factors that go into calculating the precise taxation and fees that might be, you know, might be applicable to a particular project. But I think what is important is in comparing the two, and as you can well imagine, by looking at the scope of the plans that were prepared, the Manafort proposal has the potential to bring in considerably more revenue on both a continuing basis for real estate and personal property taxes and sewer fees, and also on a, let's say, a one-time basis for building permit fees. So, in total, the Manafort proposal looks like it's a pretty good, a pretty good program from a tax and revenue perspective. Next slide, please. We also took a look at employment and population. It's important because we want economic activity, we want feed on the street, we want people with dollars to spend to feed the downtown, and so we did ask the proposers to estimate to the best of their ability what that might mean. And Damato, although it did not give us a specific construction job estimate, did indicate that they'd be moving 60 to 80 employees here, and about 30 to 50 of those would be on-site. And I should say, that includes both Damato and Meyer, as Meyer also has, you know, their own workforce. Manafort, on the other hand, expected about 50 construction projects, and that would be over a longer-term period because of the scale of the project, and a few more post-redevelopment jobs because of the mixed uses, the medical office building, the industrial condos, and the retail space. But probably the most differentiating factor is that Manafort would have residential occupants, and those are, people are there, you know, 24/7, 365, and they like to go out and get pizza and, you know, go to the restaurant and walk down the street and look in shop windows. They create some of that important economic activity that supports a healthy downtown. So, on that basis, Manafort's numbers looked a little stronger than Damato's numbers did. Next slide, please. We also looked into traffic and parking a little bit, just to make sure that what we were seeing seemed reasonable. Neither one of the proposers gave us a traffic study, and I don't think the RFP actually asked for that. Manafort, by virtue of scale, would generate more traffic than would the, than would Damato. Manafort's project is of a scale that it would warrant a traffic study, either or both as part of the planning and zoning process, and also the state traffic commission. It would meet those thresholds, so... Either or both as part of the planning and zoning process and also the State Traffic Commission. It would meet those thresholds. So there'll be sufficient opportunity to evaluate a traffic as you move forward. Damato's proposal, continuing the existing commercial industrial use, might not meet the thresholds of traffic review, but that would determine down the line. Neither one of the proposers indicated any traffic impacts or any traffic improvements as part of their proposal. So that is an important consideration moving forward. On parking, we took a look at Damato's land uses and estimated that they would need between sixty-three to sixty-nine parking spaces. There is certainly adequate area on the site for that, and they did define the areas where those would be, which we thought was also reasonable. The Manafort plan, if you count up the spaces there, at about three ninety-two. We did a couple independent estimates, and we think that the range is somewhere between three twenty-five and three seventy-two. Depending on how much consideration you want to give to shared parking where you have mixed uses. And I think there is an opportunity to do that here as the program, you know, if the program is more defined in more detail down the road, that could be looked at a little more closely, and it's a good thing to think about. Manafort did say that they would make parking available on site for public uses. The motto was pretty clear that the parking and the outdoor space on their project was to be, was to be essentially private. Next slide, please. Sam, can I kick that back to you?
Sure. Well, as you know, a large portion of the site now drains into the aquatic. Both overland and through several of the older storm drain systems that don't appear to be equipped with any sort of measure that would improve the water quality. So any new construction would likely lead to some improvement of water quality. But the Damato proposal in their continued use of the commercial industrial use of the large part of the property has indicated that they intend to maximize the reuse of existing structures. So because they are not doing a lot of ground improvement in the the larger area of the site where they're going to be storing equipment and parking, there will be less opportunity to improve the water quality going into the aquatic through storm drainage. The Manafort proposal obviously is a much more intensive development project, which leads to two elements that we think are favorable. One is the opportunity to create open space. You're actually reducing the overland flow, which improves the water quality going into the aquatic. But also the new construction will lead to storm drain reconstruction, which is also another element that will improve the water quality. So on that basis, we believe that the Manafort proposal creates the greatest likelihood for improving the quality of the storm drainage going into the river and also minimizing the likelihood of future releases. Next slide, please. Looking at the cost of remediation, as I indicated, we prepared a remedial action plan. And that looked at the cost to remediate really six fairly large release areas that were across the site that we identified. Those remediation approaches that we were using were largely guided by the reuse plan, which is, as I indicated, consistent with what the town asked. But because they're all soil, primarily soil releases, the costs are driven primarily by soil disposal costs. And our cost estimate ranged from roughly two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to a little over a million dollars, depending upon the development scenario. And again, the development scenarios we considered were really within a fairly narrow band. All of which were consistent with, I guess, what I would say is the Manafort proposal. The wide range of cost estimates is, as I said, a function of the ability to reuse the soil. So if you're going to be managing a lot of soil and you know you have to remediate it, you can reduce your overall remediation costs if you can reuse mildly contaminated soil on the site. In our opinion, that is the most efficient way of managing the soil is figuring out a way to keep it on the site so you're not paying to have it removed from the site. And then moving forward with closure through the use of environmental land use restrictions as part of that redevelopment plan. Next slide, please. Both Damato and Manafort, as I indicated earlier, have indicated a willingness to discuss and accept E L U Rs. At this preliminary stage, it would be a little bit premature to be getting into the hard numbers of discussing these E L U Rs. But I think that both parties have agreed that they recognize that E L U Rs are going to be a part of it. And Lorero recognizes that both proposals would involve some removal of off-site soil, that is, taking soil from the site and not reusing it, just because the levels that are present, the levels of contaminants that are present are really not suitable for reuse on the site. What we believe, based on our analysis, is that the Manafort proposal would likely require less off-site disposal because more of the soil can be reused on the site. If you're not going to be changing the grade of the site as the Damato proposal suggests, then you don't have the opportunity to reuse the soil as much under buildings and under other surfaces that may become elevated during redevelopment. Under the Manafort proposal, however, you do have the opportunity to reuse soil. And on this basis, though there is a range in all of these, we believe that the Manafort proposal has the greatest likelihood of reusing soil and therefore reducing the overall cost of remediation. Next slide, please.
Now, turning to potential benefits to the downtown businesses. Again, going back to the vision of what this property can be, what kind of contribution can it make to downtown? The measures that you begin to look at are things like the significance of the building improvements. What kind, how much? How are they going to interface with the, with the surroundings? What does the site and streetscape look like? Is it inviting? Is it conducive to to other businesses improving their properties? And last but not least, what kind of numbers of people are going to occupy the site? Potentially patronize the businesses or come to the site because it's got a public amenity of some sort, whether it's access to the brook or it's got the canal trail or something like that. So all those are important measures. Next slide, please. So as you look at the proposals, again, Damato is going to use those existing buildings, pretty much as is. And the outdoor areas for storage and essentially there would be limited to no, to no public access or amenities. You look at the Manafort plan and you have substantial building construction, site improvements, public amenities, including things like community space and a not insignificant residential population that would occupy those buildings when they are built. So that, in our mind, really strikes a chord with the vision for this property and for downtown. And it really creates the potential to get people to come there for, to live there, number one, to work there, number two, and number three, to visit there, to take advantage of whatever attraction might be there. At this point, I think I'm going to yield the floor to the gentleman from the town. I think they want to share some other perspectives with you on that particular item.
Yes, Kathy and Town Council. Derek Daigle, who's the town planner, is going to talk about the planning and zoning and the Krag Capital Region Council Government's input. And Kevin, if you can go to the next slide. Derek, it's all yours.
All right. As we stated, we did provide input and request input from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Capital Region Council Governments, also known as Krag, the E D A, and the Plainville Chamber of Commerce. I'll be talking about the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as Capital Region Council Governments and Cal Habger. Your Economic Development Coordinator will cover the E D A and the Chamber of Commerce. Could we go to the next slide? All right. So both proposals were given to the Planning and Zoning Commission to review. The commission was, given the proposals, unanimously chose the Manafort proposal. It has been the goal of the commission to see substantial redevelopment of downtown Plainville. To the point that the White Oak property was called out specifically and criteria was outlined to provide and promote an active downtown with a significant but beneficial increase in testing traffic that would benefit the local businesses. Could you go to the next slide, Kevin? As I stated, it was identified in the Plan of Conservation Development. The White Oak property was identified with criteria that would be beneficial to town, including a mixed use development of sufficient density to help support downtown. Provide parking areas away from Main Street and open and provide access to the Quatic River. There are a few other criteria, but those are the main ones that are important right now. And then next slide, Kevin. And lastly, Krag provided input on the plan. They stated that the location is ideal for the Manafort proposal, given its location along the C T Fast Track. They also cited compliance with the Regional Plan of Conservation Development that Manafort aligned with, including guiding growth to regional centers and areas of established infrastructure. Increase sustainable redevelopment and infill development. Encourage housing near major transit facilities. Encourage and support rental housing stock and the expansion of housing opportunities for renters. Increase the range of choice in housing for people of all incomes and ages, especially for those who have the least choice in achieving their location preference. And encourage mixed use contact development and the incorporation of diverse affordable housing and infill developments where appropriate. And I'll hand it over to Cal now.
Great, thanks, guys. Last Monday on the twenty-eighth, the E D A hosted a special meeting to review both the redevelopment scenarios submitted by Damato, Meyer, and Manafort. Chairman Valde May had an open discussion where E D A members were given the opportunity to show their views on both submitted proposals. The discussion concluded with consent to support from members for the Manafort proposal. Members cited the following reasons for support. Alignment with the Plan of Conservation Development and E D A's longstanding effort to revitalize and grow commerce and activity in the downtown. The key chance to diversify downtown business offerings while also attracting new businesses to town. Support the existing downtown businesses through an increase of traffic from those visiting, working, and living at the proposal. An increase of public parking. And the incorporation of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail and public acts of the Quatic River. All of these factors played a significant role. The E D A members showed support for the Manafort proposal. And made a believable place substantial role in further developing the central place in downtown Plainville. Next slide. So also then keeping the Plainville Chamber to date on happenings with the White Oak property during their monthly board meetings. Board members were given a copy of the submitted proposals, as well as a recording of developer interviews conducted by the council back in October. Board members discussed both proposals, including that the Manafort proposal would be the best fit for the White Oak property. As they feel a better alliance with our organizational goal of enriching businesses in town. Given the inclusion of more places of employment and apartment units, chamber members felt that the Manafort proposal would bring more people to the downtown area to both utilize and support the existing retailers, businesses, and restaurants. And be able to do so more impactfully than the relocation of Damato and why we would be able to do. And as such, the Plainville Chamber of Commerce Board supports the Manafort redevelopment proposal for the White Oak property. With that, I'll turn it back over to Sam and Clint.
Thank you, Cal. We can go to the next slide, what it's going to need to do so. So one of the other areas of interest was what kind of demands for town services might these activities create? And of course, the best way to do that is ask the people that provide the services. So we were able to work with the town and the town actually carried the ball on this one was to conduct a very comprehensive survey of the operating departments, including the school department, to identify and assess any demands for their services to support either the project. And the overwhelming conclusion was that neither proposal would create any undue, unmanaged or significant impact on town operations. We stepped back from that a little bit and also took a look at it and and came to the same conclusion. We felt there were no sleepers there in terms of something coming up that would require an inordinate amount of support of the town from a service perspective. Next slide, please. So this is sort of where the rubber begins to hit the road. This is a what's next possible timeline moving forward. And we actually put this together for both proposals because they are a little bit different. You can see in the first sixty days, the activities are essentially the same. Start to draft a memorandum or understanding for who's going to do what, when. The next is to, you know, advance any kind of grant applications. The timing is quite fortuitous. The state announced recently that there's a grant program coming up here in relatively short order. I know the town's been right on that. And then begin to formalize the remediation expectations sort of around the lines of what Sam spoke about in terms of the E L U Rs and how the project would interface with that. So those are pretty much the same, no matter what. Where it begins to change a little bit, when you move into the next increment of time, let's say, the next six to twelve months. Under the structure of the Damato proposal, you know, once the grant award is presumably received, is that remediation can get underway. And once that is satisfactorily completed, the property can be transferred. And then you can begin the development process, which for their project, they estimated at one to two years, everything considered. Looking at the Manafort side of the table, a little bit different scenario is there would be somewhere in there in that second increment of time, an actual transfer of property and a collaboration on things to move the design permitting and public entitlement process along. And then initiate the coordinated remediation development in that fashion. And then what follows from that, obviously, is the vertical construction above ground for the various buildings. That process is estimated at two to three years to bring that to fruition. One other comment I might add is that in the case of the renovation of the existing buildings, that can possibly get out of the gate earlier than some of the new constructions. So and that's, I think, true for both proposals. And that presents an opportunity to do a couple of things. Number one, take that, take the existing buildings and begin to show some results from the fruits of everyone's labors. And I think it could be, and to create some really positive vibes and enthusiasm about the project as a whole. So just a little different way that the two projects might evolve. Now, I imagine, you know, through the product of negotiation and discussion, those might change a little bit, but generally that would be the our conception of how things might happen moving forward.
Yep. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Clint, but just a point of clarification, in case the council is not already aware of it. Is that under the Damato proposal, it's the town that's doing the remediation. So the property doesn't transfer until the remediation is complete. And as Clint indicated, there is a, we are optimistic that the town would receive some funding from the state to help with that, under both proposals. receive some funding from the state to help with that, under both proposals. But to be clear, the transfer of the property doesn't occur until the remediation is complete under the Damato proposal. Under the Manafort proposal, the transfer of the property occurs, and then the remediation is initiated in a coordinated manner. Under either scenario, I don't think it is realistic to anticipate that either Damato or Manafort would initiate any redevelopment activity prior to the transfer of property, but there is an opportunity to initiate the redevelopment, once that transfer is complete. And based on our analysis, that transfer would occur sooner under the Manafort proposal. So underscoring what Clint was saying, it would, there may be an opportunity to sort of see progress, if you will, sooner under the Manafort proposal.
This is Kathy Puglisi. Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you. I am wondering about the partnership that was spoken about regarding the remediation between the town and the Manafort team. Can you expand on that a little bit about what that exactly means, the partnership? Is the town going to be responsible for some of it, and then Manafort responsible for some, or I'm not quite sure how that is supposed to roll out?
Are you asking in terms of the remediation element or the design element?
Well, I thought the remediation was going to be in partnership with both the town and Manafort.
Under the Manafort proposal, we had some discussion with the State Department of Economic Development, and they indicated that the town would be the applicant for the grant. That's what makes the project attractive to the state. But in the case where a developer has been identified, it's really the developer, the town becomes more or less a pass-through. So that there, the arrangement is that the developer is the one who is doing the work, the town is receiving the money and passing it through to the developer. I didn't, I apologize, I did not mean to imply that the town would have a role, a significant role in actually having to complete the remediation.
Okay, so if the town, in fact, applies for some of these grants and completes the remediation, I'm not sure to see what the difference is, quite honestly.
The town would apply for the grants, and in both cases, there would be, we are optimistic that they would receive it, that we're, we think that the town would be more favorably seen by the state because the project, the Manafort project is more in line with what the state likes to see for these sorts of brownfield projects. If the Damato proposal was accepted by the town and was funded by the state, then that money would go to the town, and the town would be responsible for doing the work. Under the Manafort proposal, what the state would do is enter an agreement with the town to pass the money through to Manafort, who would do the remediation during development. So the town would not be doing the actual remediation work under the Manafort proposal. The Manafort would.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last slide, please. Thank you. So what we did to try to boil this down is, is took those evaluation topics and then briefly, as we could, just pencil in kind of the overriding conclusion or thought by topic, so you had a handy reference for it and can, you know, use that as a tool to further evaluate how you see these proposals in light of the criteria that were in the RFP, and some of this more drilling down that was done to fully understand where the, when benefits might be. So that's just a little bit of a reference tool. Also, I believe in your, in your council package was our complete report with its, with some of its backup material. So certainly, that's a good tool, too, to use. We weren't going to replicate that here before you tonight, but it is, it is something that you might find useful in it. There's some worksheets in there that show how the, some of the estimates were derived, and if you have a desire to look at that also. So that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss any items that may be of interest.
Madam Chair?
Just go ahead.
I have a question, Mr. Brown. You kind of, we, I know we had specifically asked for traffic study for this, and you kind of glossed over it when you were talking about it and saying Manafort may be heavier traffic, based on having two businesses and 160 apartment buildings and 392 parking spaces there. I would say that the Manafort traffic pattern may be significantly heavier than Damato, and I'm wondering how that would be addressed, seeing that we have rail, active railroad tracks right there in the center of town, and we also have a fire department right next door to where this development would be. So, and historic building is on either side of a single-lane highway. So how is something like that ever going to be addressed, when the, to me, the traffic would not be sustainable?
Well, and I didn't mean to gloss over, and I apologize if I did that. First and foremost, Manafort offered to do a traffic study as they moved their proposal along. And in fact, we believe they are required to do a traffic study either under your planning and zoning procedures, or certainly under the state traffic procedures. And again, West Main Street is a state highway, so you will actually get the benefit of getting a traffic study from, from an applicant in the event that they move along, and you'll get the review by the State Office of State Traffic Administration, in addition to whatever else you might decide to do, so that you can, number one, quantify that traffic, know how many people are coming and going during what times of the day, how does that coincide with, with the traffic that's on the street today, what does that mean in terms of safety and operations, and consider things like the railroad tracks and the proximity of the firehouse. So I think there's an opportunity to do that. You don't want to do it until you take the proposal a little farther down the road, because I think then you might be estimating it on some things that may very well change. But the program needs to be defined a little more, and I think that comes to both the applicant, the proposer presenting the next step, if you will, and getting into the review process a little more.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Puglisi here. So just as a follow-up to Councilman Tompkins' question, Mr. Brown, I have a copy of the presentation that was given to the Economic Development Group last week or so, December 21st, and part of that study stated that traffic generated by DA/ME, meaning Damato and Meyer, project is estimated at 470 trips per day. MBI project project generation is estimated at 2,996 trips per day. I'm curious as to how those estimates came up, if now, in fact, that is not going to be part of this discussion at this point in time. Where did those numbers come from in that report?
We generated some estimates using Institution, Institute of Traffic Transportation Engineers' data. However, they were daily counts only. They were not peak hour counts, and that's what really matters. And we did not have sufficient information to develop peak hour counts, which are really the ones that determine whether you need traffic improvements, traffic signals, and those kind of things. So rather than present a, let's say, incomplete picture of that, we felt it was better to wait until such time that a traffic impact analysis could be done on the truly substantive aspect, and it dealt with those particular figures.
Thank you. So is it possible that these numbers in the report could be either an underestimation or an overestimation of what could actually happen there?
They could be either.
Okay, thank you for that. While I have the mic, if you will, I do have a question for Garrett. Garrett, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Garrett, in your report, you also said that CROG did a review of the Manafort proposal. Did they also review the Damato proposal, or just the Manafort proposal?
I believe it was just the Manafort proposal, because the Damato proposal is just a continuation of the existing use, and this would be a change of the existing use. And at the state level, they have plans for the region about what areas are, would be ideal in certain areas. So in downtown areas, they identify that it's obviously more preferable to have a mixed-use development than an industrial use, which is what we currently have. So we only had them review the Manafort proposal for compliance with the state plan. If it was existing, it doesn't matter. The Manafort proposal's changed, so we had them review that.
Okay, thank you, Garrett.
Kathy, we did, we did provide CROG with both proposals. They did take a look at the, the Damato proposal, and again, because that was consistent with, you know, its past use, they didn't feel a need to opine on that. It certainly didn't fit into, you know, their regional goals with regards to downtown areas, so.
Okay, thank you for your information. Anybody have any other further questions regarding the presentation or the information we looked at tonight?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Rosemary?
Okay, thank you. I wonder if Clinton and Sam could explain a little more something that's in the full report in regard to the remediation, about the uncertain, this is in reference to the Damato proposal, in reference to the uncertainty regarding the acceptance of use restrictions leads to uncertainty regarding remediation costs. I think I understand it, but I just want to make sure. And if they could kind of explain that a little bit more, that might be helpful.
Sure. Well, an environmental land use restriction does just that. It restricts the use of the property to certain things, and it requires the construction of an engineered barrier over that area. And so when you, when you are saying, you know, I agree conceptually to an environmental land use restriction, you are saying that you are going to accept, you know, not free and, not, not free use of that property. You're understanding that there's a limitation to that. Both, both parties have indicated that they will conceptually accept this. But in, in both cases, if, if, say, a land use restriction, when, when we get down to brass tacks, is really not that acceptable in that location, then all of a sudden, there's a need to manage the soil in that location. And so that's where there's the uncertainty. If, in either, in either proposal, if the proposer were to suddenly feel that they didn't want any environmental land use restrictions on their property, then those, then it would be, there would be a need to remediate more soil and use less land use restrictions, and that would increase the remediation cost.
Okay, and you seem to feel that, though, there was more uncertainty with the Damato proposal.
What we believe is that there's more ability to reuse the soil on the site, and, and in that reuse, there is, you know, there's an implied acceptance of the environmental land use restriction. So in the discussions about the acceptance of an environmental land use restriction, there was also a discussion, in the case of the Manafort proposal, there was also a discussion of the reuse of it, and that further reduces the cost of remediation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions for the presenters this evening? Okay, if there aren't any further questions, I would like to thank everybody participating this evening from LaRrow for all the hard work you put in and for your kind patience with our questions. Perhaps there'll be more as we move forward, but at this point in time, I do appreciate your, your time this evening and explaining to us the work that you did so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Kathy, you're muted.
Got it. Robert, we're still in your report, so unless you have anything else to add with the White Oak proposal, the next item you have is a COVID-19 update for us?
I do. According to the Health Director, who is Shane Lockwood, over the past few weeks, the pandemic continues to spread as expected. The region continues to see new cases every day, with a positivity rate hovering between 5 and 9%. This is expected to continue for a while longer as we get through outbreaks associated with the holiday gatherings. Many models show the peak of the wave to be from around now to the end of this month. This will depend greatly on the public, following the public health recommendations of staying home when you are sick, wearing a face covering, and frequent hand washing as well. Locally, we saw slight decreases in cases in the district between November to December. Waiting time for testing has decreased throughout the state for testing, and we have not been observing the long lines that occurred pre-Thanksgiving. The best place to find a testing location is by calling 211 or by visiting www.211ct.org. Shane went out to say "we," which includes the world, the nation, and the state, are still in the very, very early stages of global vaccination campaign. In the United States, vaccinations are based on priority groupings set by the CDC and approved by the state. Vaccinations have not yet been completed for the first priority group, which is known as 1A. This section contains frontline health workers, healthcare workers, first responders with, with direct patient care, and resident of long-term care and related facilities. For the town of Plainville, our frontline first responders is the police department. The U.S. will be hit, will hit the three-week mark today for vaccine distribution that is expected to last well into the summer. According to the CDC, as of today, 4.5 million persons have received the COVID-19 vaccination. As more information becomes available in the coming weeks and months on vaccine distribution and eligibility, the Health District will update the town website, the Health District website as well. In Plainville, there are 13 education employees and five town employees that are currently under quarantine under CDC guidelines. That does not mean necessarily that they have COVID. It just means that they, they must be quarantined, most of them because of their coming in close contact with somebody who was, who did have COVID. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Daskel to speak to the high school pool heater, and then speak to happenings, and then we'd both be available to answer any questions you may have for us.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening. Through you, Town Manager Lee, and Chairwoman Puglisi. This evening, before you, you have the fiscal year '21 Capital Improvement Plan. Includes the replacement of the Plainville High School Pool Heater. It's essentially a large, specially-designed commercial water boiler. The project included a budget of $64,000. The project went out to bid with two options, one an in-kind replacement, and one a high-efficiency boiler offering 97% efficiency, as opposed to the current approximately 80, 85% efficiency. Five bids were received for this project. This evening, we're recommending that the council proceed with Low Bidder Elite Mechanical Contractors LLC in the amount of $53,170 for the high-efficiency alternative. There is an action item underneath "New Business" for council's consideration. Do you have any questions? I can answer them, or I can...
Does anybody have any questions for Matt regarding the high school? Does anybody have any questions for Matt regarding the high school pool heater replacement that he just spoke about? Okay, that is on our agenda under New Business, so there are no questions. Are you going, what is next? Will you be doing happenings for us, Matt, as well?
I will. Happening, taxes are due in January. Town real estate, personal property and motor vehicle supplemental bills are due January 1, 2021, and delinquent after February 2021. The town council adopted a deferral program for property tax relief due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Program offers an extended grace period for taxes due January 1, 2020 and defers the last day to pay without interest. It is not a deferral of the tax itself. Further information or to apply is available on the town website at plainvillct.com or in the Assessment and Revenue Collection Office. Also this evening for happenings, we have a number of senior center events coming up. The COVID-19 drive-through testing continues this month. It's Tuesday, January 12th from 9 to noon. We also have several Zoom programs available as well as Zoom 101 sessions continuing. Remembering G. Fox and Company is coming up January 13th. Advanced rock climbing with Jared at Ragged Mountain is coming up January 19th. A winter workout challenge is beginning Thursday, January 21st. There's information available on that from the Senior Center and to sign up. As always, their help with Zoom program continues and their carrying and connecting program will also continue. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thanks, Matt. I may try the help with Zoom program. Seems I'm having a little trouble tonight, but nonetheless, I appreciate, appreciate your report. Does anybody have any questions for Matt regarding his report or for Robert Lee as well? Okay, before we move on, I know that our state representative, Bill Pettit, is, had joined us. I'm not sure if Bill is still with us. Bill, did you have anything you'd like to bring from the state Capitol? Any news?
Yeah, just a couple, couple of quick things, Madam Chairwoman. Robert and Shane made the, made the good points. I mean, I think from my point of view, the good news is we've been hovering in the 1,100, 1,200 range for people hospitalized for the last month or so, so we haven't seen a major increase. And we are down to 5% with the most recent positivity. It has bumped between 5 and 9. People though at high risk need to continue to be cautious. We've had 264 deaths in Connecticut in the past seven days, which is the most that we've had in the past eight months. The biggest risk is for, for those that are over 70 and those with compromised immune system. So the, the basic precautions are critical. In regards to vaccinations, I think Plainville's done a good job in setting up the people that are in that Group 1A, healthcare providers and first responders. The allocation subcommittee of the Vaccine Advisory Group is meeting again tomorrow and hopefully setting up the criteria for 1B. As you might imagine, all of you on the council, that pretty much everybody with any job in the states sends me an email and calls me and thinks that actually they should be at the top of the list for vaccination. So I don't envy the allocation subcommittee. They will likely not, not copy, but nearly follow the guidelines from the CDC but are at liberty to amend it in any way that they see fit. So they're meeting tomorrow from 10 to 12. That's available on CTN. So it's going to be interesting to see because I have been mildly besieged. So I suspect they've been besieged in a major way with requests to get to the top of the list. And finally, Madam Chair, and you probably have all heard, I've, I've received a great many emails, phone calls, et cetera, really over the past four to six weeks about car break-ins and that type of activity around town. And we've heard it in, you know, Southington, New Britain, Plainville, Farmington, all surrounding us. And I can just say that the legislature is aware, my specific caucus, the House Republican Caucus is aware, and we are submitting a bill to judiciary to adjust some of the statutes in terms of juvenile offenders. I've talked with a number of people, including Robert, and we agree that certainly with youthful offenders, you don't want to throw away the key initially, but we need some diversionary programs. And if people aren't willing to stick with the program, then perhaps they, they need to be retransferred to adult court. But we're hopeful that we can have, our bill can get a hearing and that we can amend the statutes to decrease some of the crime and issues that are going on. We realize it's, hasn't been made better by the pandemic and is a multifactorial issue and will, doesn't need just more punishment, but needs alternative programs for folks as well. And we've talked about, Town Manager Lee and I and Senator Martin, we've talked about having a conversation with the community. So hopefully, end of January, February, hopefully we can have a conversation when some of these proposals are up and we can bring some of them forward to people and get some input from not only the police community, but the local community about what they think are the major issues in terms of these crimes and the young people that are committing them on a repetitive basis. So we're hopeful, hopeful to have a, it'd be nice to do it in person. I think that's better, but we may have to do it this way via Zoom, which may make it a little more difficult to have good back and forth with people. So thank you for the time, Manager.
Of course, always a pleasure to hear from you. Thank you for your updates to us. If anybody, if anybody has any further questions for Robert Lee or for Representative Pettit? Anybody have anything that they'd like to follow up on? Okay, thank you. We will, we will continue on then. The next item of business on our agenda is New Business and we have a motion to vote on. So may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair. Motion to award bid number 2021-08, high school pool heater to Elite Mechanical Contractors LLC Bristol, Connecticut in the amount of $53,170.
Dave Underwood second's that motion.
Great, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That is the only item under New Business for this evening. And looking down the agenda, Mr. Lee, do you have any other discussions of interest that you'd like to share at this time?
Just to, just to, and there were reminders, the joint meeting with the Board of Education to talk about the upcoming budget, fiscal year '22 budget scheduled for the 19th, you know, before our next meeting. Town staff is working with the school administration to put together a, a program, updated information that, you know, hopefully will be helpful to the council and the Board of Education as we prepare for the budget season. Second item is Valley Water rate increase. They have, the PURA has published a public hearing date of February 11th where people can participate at 6:00 PM via Zoom. We'll, you'll get more word out as far as that's concerned. I've tried contacting them. It's, it's more difficult getting ahold of state people for getting additional information. I'm looking to see if the town can become an intervenor in this rate process to provide us more access to information and allow us to, more opportunities to participate. I've been able, I put in some phone calls. They haven't been returned yet. I will continue and endeavor to, to, you know, see what can be done. I've also been in contact with the Office of Consumer Counsel, which is the group that's supposed to oversee on behalf of the rate payers, the, these types of rate increase requests and, you know, to see how they may be helpful to us as we dig deeper into this, which is a relatively large increase that is being requested by Valley Water. So more to, more to come. And certainly, you know, I suspect that the town council will want to take a position on this as we gain more information and make sure that the voices of our residents are heard as we move forward in this process. So that's all I have to report on the other business.
Thank you, Robert. As an intervenor, does that mean we are able to submit some type of testimony? Or is it that we will get all the information that PURA and related agencies send, you know, communicate back and forth with the Valley Water Company?
Well, everyone from the public will be able to give input, you know, at the February 11th public hearing. I believe as an intervener, we may be able to participate in some of the other hearings that they're going to have that are limited to, you know, they have other hearings scheduled that will be for PURA. People can observe it, but maybe not participate in it because it'll be their discussion of the more details with respect to the, to the rate increase. So I, that's, that's part of what I'm trying to find out from PURA is whether we will have more participatory, participatory opportunities as an interviewer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm interested in, you know, if there's anything the council should do in terms of submitting a document regarding the rate increase and its impact on our residents in addition to the impact on our community. You know, for example, our fire department, that's huge impact to the hydrants and the usage. That would be substantial for us, though. If there's anything we can do or documents you want us to sign, you'll let us know if that should happen.
Yes, and we've set up a staff meeting with Valley Water to go through their application process and get more details, more specifics about that. And that is scheduled for, I think, in a week or so. So hopefully, as we get more information, we can give more advice to the council as to, you know, where, you know, where this may lead. For example, one of the questions that we asked in preparation for that is, what would happen if you didn't get the rate increase? You know, what would that mean to Valley Water if you didn't get any rate increase? And another question we asked him was, what would, what would happen if you only got half the request? You know, how would that impact your operation? You know, so I think those questions like that are important to know the answers as, as we evaluate, you know, what, what would, you know, what would be the result of not having a rate increase at all, for example?
Okay, well, a lot of questions and hopefully I'm sure that you'll be getting some answers as we move through this. Thank you for that. If there are no other discussions of interest from anybody else in the council, I'm assuming there are none. If there are, please let me know. No?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
There it is. All right, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? I'm sure not. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We will be...
Thank you.
Bye. Good evening.
Have a good week, everyone.